Okay, it is 3:30, so I am going to go ahead. Think we have enough?
This conference will now be recorded.
We have a call for the Planning Commission, so I'm going to call this meeting's order for the March 1st, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Before we go to the additions to the agenda, I just want to make sure everybody knows that Jessica will have the Planning Commission packet the Friday prior to the meeting out ready for public by noon, so that for this meeting, the packet would have been out no later than noon on February 25th. And somebody came in and said they wanted, they were told it would be a week in advance. It's not going to be a week in advance, so please make sure it's the Friday prior. And then just be, please be patient with our city admin, our city, not only administrator, but employees, they're down, probably one and a half people, and so if we make a mistake every now and then, please be patient with them. So are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. The one thing that did come out, and it came out yesterday, was there was a brief overview, and Jessica and I just missed it and didn't get it in the packet, so hopefully we gave you guys enough time to read it. It was quick and easy reading, it was just over for the short-term vacation rentals within Port Orford. And so do we have any appro, or Commissioners, I'm assuming that you had time to look through the minutes of the February 1st meeting?
Commissioner Burnt, I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 1st, 2022.
Oh my gosh Pamela, I was like, you knew what I was gonna ask. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, I was too much on top of it.
Do I have a second to Commissioner Burnt's motion?
Commissioner Rossi, second.
Any discussion? Okay, what am I gonna ask? Uh, here we go, Commissioner Schofield?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Jesuit?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan Holm?
Yes.
Commissioner Nara, yes, motion carries unanimously. Okay, so now we're onto agenda item number four, comments from the public. Uh, the comments from the public, please note it's only on what is on the agenda, which is currently vacation rentals, so do we have any comments from the public? Go ahead, Sarah.
All right, thanks Krista. Good afternoon, everyone, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you again about short-term rentals. And the City Council tasked you to address short-term rentals in Port Orford, which is a daunting task with many components. However, currently, STRs are not defined in our rural R1 and R2 zones. And the first question in my mind would be, do we, the citizens of Port Orford, want STRs in the R1 and R2 zones? And I think a simple survey of residents with just one question, do you want to allow STRs in your neighborhood, could help the Commission proceed with this large task? And if not, how do we address the current STRs in the residential zones? Do we lose them through attrition? How do we, and then we have to answer, how do we regulate STR citywide? So I think, what are the whys and thoughtful licensing parameters which will define the city's process? And you know, how do we define NSDR? What's residential versus commercial? There just are a myriad of questions to be resolved by this Commission. And I do think you have time to do it. I reviewed TLT applications, I have them from 2004, but the ones that were submitted in last June to current, the current number that I have, there were 26 that will come up for renewal. There were eight applications in January, and seven of them occurred in that week of January 13th to the 21st. And I think Jessica spoke to that. Of the 26, 21 of them were from people outside of the city limits and of the TLT applications, the current ones. And five of them I couldn't tell because they just have P O boxes, I don't know where they physically reside. This is just a simple snapshot, there's so much information for you. Honestly, I respect your having to deal with this. And are we obligated to renew? So I just wanted to encourage you to seriously consider our goal also of affordable housing as well as our neighborhoods' livability issues. And I just want to thank you for all your hard work, because I know it just ain't easy. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Go ahead, Anne.
Hey there, thank you Krista. Hello, all. I just want to thank you so much for your work to develop a sensible STR code for us. Communities elsewhere have struggled with the problems of too many short-term rentals, and so I appreciate our city's effort to try to get ahead of the curve on this one. Just briefly, I want to remind you that there are two important parts of this issue, and hopefully whatever you come up with will address both of these parts. First and foremost is the matter of affordable housing supply. Every home that's converted to an STR is not available for someone who works here, and already more than 7% of our homes have been converted to STRs. In addition, every STR also boosts the costs of properties and housing, and this also makes it harder for people who work in Port Orford to live here. Second is this matter of STRs not always being the best neighbors to residents because they can create nuisances related to noise, parking, trash, and pet conflicts. It seems there are many good tools to deal with both of these issues, and I appreciate the list provided in the packet of cities and the different tools many have used. At the last PC meeting, we heard Crystal Shoji explain that STRs are already not in outright use in our residential zones. But then at the last City Council meeting, I heard Jessica express that there was further discussion about this and that this was up for further interpretation. So I'd like to ask that our PC members make sure to ask our staff, Crystal, Jessica, and Shayla, to explain this better to everyone. If STRs are already not allowed, the key question becomes what to do with the ones that already exist. Personally, I think the best approach to accomplish this and the two goals would be to put a numerical cap on STRs in residential zones and to develop a licensing program across all zones. I think this needs to be strong but simple, so our city staff can handle administering it, and that we should have a separate and more substantial STR fee beyond the low business license fee to help pay for funding this. Finally, I'd like to make a constructive comment about the survey. I think that it could be very positive to provide more context and some basic education on this issue rather than just asking questions. For example, the survey could include basic background info about why the city is working on this issue, including what Jessica has said in meetings about the more than 7% of our housing already being in STRs. I think this would help people become more better, become better informed, and also to help the city move forward in developing an effective ordinance. Thanks so much for considering my comments, and thanks for your work on this.
Thank you, Anne. Are there any other public comments during this time? Okay, if not, agenda item number five, public hearing, none. So I'm gonna move on to agenda item number six, planning matters. I think before we really kind of move on, I'd like everybody to please go to page 2021. And that is the City Council Agenda Documentation from the meeting. And I know at our last meeting, there was a comment made that I don't necessarily think that our code is black and white. In my conversations with Jessica and looking at the ordinances, to say that STRs are illegal in R1 and R2 zones, I do not, I believe it's a gray area. And let me tell you why. If you read what Jessica put, there are some under the code 17.08.030, there's an authorization of similar uses stating that the City Council may permit in a particular zone a use not listed in the title. I think when you look at different types of businesses, STRs are considered businesses, and possibly by saying you can have this business, but not this business, might actually not, well, not be an appropriate, might actually go against that particular ordinance. And Jessica, jump in at any time. The other piece I want to remind the Planning Commission and the public of is this piece of precedence. And I tried to bring that up, and I think we had to kind of talk about it a little bit more. There's already been a precedence that the City Council has allowed STRs in R1 and R2 zones. And so I think that by allowing those, and Jessica, please again, jump in as if I'm stating it incorrectly, by allowing those precedences to occur, those already, those STRs to occur, there's a precedent, so you can't just automatically say, well, it says not, we can't do it. There's already been a precedent set that there has been allowed the STRs in those zones. And so I think in some conversations that I've actually had with some city members who work for people who have STRs, if you ban them, they're not going to sell the houses, they're not going to live in there. So now there becomes a whole different problem. The problem now becomes, do we want vacant houses sitting in our neighborhood? So now, who watches the vacant houses? Now do we ask our police force to do more policing? The other piece I think, as well as when we talk about TLT taxes, Jessica and I had a conversation in, for the 2020, or 21 year, I believe the TLT taxes collected from vacation rentals in Port Orford were over $150,000 into our community. I believe Jessica told me in just the month of January, Jessica?
Yeah, through January, we had almost $100,000 already up this year from previous years.
So we're talking about a lot of money that is also coming into our community. Now, is money everything? It's not. But I think we have to, it's one of those where I think we have to decide, are we gonna promote tourism, and if so, how do we get tourists to our town? And are we willing to cut out a piece of this economy, of our economy? It's kind of one of those catch-22s. Go ahead, Jessica.
Well, with the TLT tax too, it also goes back into the community through those TLT grants that everyone applies for, that like Main Street gets at, you know, the Jubilee gets, that's what pays for the Fourth of July fireworks. I mean, think about all these other community events that that money actually goes to in supplies. And then also with that too, in part of our business license code, it does talk about the TLT taxes, or it talks about taxes in general, and it states that if you are required to pay taxes in any sort of ordinance within the city of Port Orford, then you are required to have a business license. So in my ver, and not in my version, but when I was talking over with the council, with that, that is them then authorizing them to have a business license and to have a business, because it's telling them they have no choice but to have a business license. So that was the second section, and it says, Section 5.04.070 of the code. So it does state that they are basically, in a roundabout way, approved, the way that it states that, because they cannot operate without a business license then if they're required to pay tax. So it kind of goes hand in hand in that aspect. That was one of the other things that we discussed at the City Council.
And I think too, one of the things to keep in mind is, is if we were to short-term vacation, we were to prohibit short-term vacation rentals, number one, we would lose this tax that just for short-term vacation, we know we're getting over $150,000, that comes directly back to our community. But who's to say they're still not gonna do it, and we don't know that? Go ahead, Diane.
Yeah, so the 150 is from just short-term rental, or is that including the motels as well?
Motels, but a majority of it actually came from short-term rentals, because some of the motels didn't even, weren't even open part of the time last year and this year.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Thank you for that question. I think that one of the also fine lines that we do need to look at is if we were to eliminate or prohibit them in the R1, R2, who's to say that they just wouldn't do it anyways? And so I think the City Council, in their last council meeting, has asked that we continue to move forward with creating, with creating, I don't want to call them policies, but ultimately good neighborhood rules. How, what would we recommend? Looking at business license, I think in the great research that Pamela and Greg did, we were noticing that business license for short-term vacation rentals were not just 50 bucks, they were in the 400 to 450 dollar range. And I think by looking at those type of licenses, that will help pay for positions to actually go and help enforce some of our codes, not only just short-term vacation rentals, which is a need, but also some of the other codes. And so I think, you know, to say that short-term vacation rentals are illegal is not a correct statement, it's a very gray area in our code. That, it may not say in our code what they are, but a roundabout way, you can see that our code in some aspects may, may say that they are legal throughout our town. So I think our conversation that we really need to start looking at is how do we define a hotel, motel, and other lodging in our town? If we look at short-term vacation rentals, what would our policies be? And how can we raise money to enforce our policies? Because at this point, you can write whatever ordinances, codes, whatever you want, but if there's nobody to enforce them, it doesn't mean anything except lovely ink on paper. So with that being said, I would think to go back to pages 8 through 14, and looking at Greg and Pamela's vacation rental laws on the Oregon coast. So it was a great, I actually really enjoyed reading it, Greg and Pamela, thank you so much. There was a lot of aha moments for me, and I think one of the big things that I took away from the research was, was that there's no if, ands, or buts, they'll be there. Everybody I think knows that short-term vacation rentals will be a part of every place on the coast. How do you regulate them to fit your town? So Pamela and Greg, I'm gonna throw this out to you guys, if you kind of want to go through and see what, tell us kind of some takeaways that perhaps you got, and maybe how it would relate to our city or our town, and then kind of go from there.
Krista, this is Pamela. I had a question first, and I think it's probably best to direct it to Jessica.
Okay.
It's in reference to whether or not fees that are collected via TLT, are, is there a list of how they can be used? Are there restrictions? Could, could we, if you have a list, could we look at that? If you don't have a list, could we make one? So I am pretty sure that it is actually spelled out within the code for the TLT tax. Okay. Let me see, give me one second. Sorry, I didn't look at that in advance, but it just kind of came into my brain. The reason being, and while you're looking, I'll just kind of keep chattering, is if this is something that we could apply to, like what Krista suggested, to upgrade or make modifications and changes to our current ordinances, which we know costs money, if somehow we could apply some of this to our water systems?
No, there are very specific things that we can use, but that is definitely not one of them.
Okay, all right. Well, that's a shame.
Yeah, I know. It is a good thought, but it's very, yeah, they're very specific on different things that I know for water specifically, we have a lot of other options, well, not a lot, but that it can specifically go to, but I don't think if I remember correctly this, I know that this is not one of them, but I know that.
Okay.
I just don't remember her reading.
So you're saying there are restricted and unrestricted funds in the budget, correct?
Oh, there's a million restricted and unrestricted funds, it just, yes. Yeah, we have them all over, yeah.
Okay, just want to clarify that, in case anybody else had questions. Well, I think actually the latest piece that Greg did and sent in, that sort of summarized things, might be the place to start. What do you think, Greg? I'd say either that, or we simply run through the list. Has any, has everyone gone through the checklist that we put together? So there were cited examples with websites for the different cities, and in addition to that, then there was like the checklist that would be required for anyone with vacation rental.
Yes, Jessica?
Sorry, I just found the portion of the code for you. So it states in here, the funds collected under this ordinance should be allocated to the Parks Fund, and that they are for the city area tourism development, city area beautification. And so they would go to Main Street, obviously, for tourism money in order to promote tourism is a portion of it, along with the TLT grants that we supply to different places, different people throughout the city. And so a lot of it is just, is for basically those few things, for the city beautification and then the parks, are the three, are the three things that it can go to, according to the city code, and that is 3.08.240.
Okay, so it could be used though for some kind of community structure, let's say, or improvements?
Yes, not necessarily. So it has to go through either, if it goes through city beautification, it can only be used on the 101, it can only be used on certain places within the city. So like the city beautification can, I know like Tasty Kate applied for it, I think two years ago or last year. So it can only go to places that are beautifying basically the 101 to kind of upgrade our town a little bit as you come through. There's very few other places outside of the 101, but like I said, the parks, so they can, you know, there's different funds for that, it stays within the Parks Fund. So within the Parks Fund, there's restrictions and places and how you can use it.
And is this controlled by the state of Oregon?
No, it's controlled by me, by us, by the city.
Okay, so there is room for alterations?
No, because then we would have to go through an ordinance change through the city of Port Orford.
Okay, yeah. But I mean, that's a possibility.
Uh, yes, it would just require a lot more, a lot of extra movement and approvals and other things.
Okay, I mean, I understand, I'm just trying to get to the possibilities of all this money, if it were increased, could be used.
More than likely, there are ways that it can be, yes, but it'll have to go through, obviously, the City Council for any of those things.
Okay, thank you for looking that up, Jessica.
Go ahead, Commissioner Phelan too, I see his hand up, sorry Commissioner Burnt.
Great, thanks.
You want to finish, Pamela?
Turn me.
Oh. I, I appreciate Commissioner Nara that she would like to move forward with this and get to the details. And you have sort of directed us out of the overview into the details and precedents of what the city is doing and maybe justifying what the city has been doing. In the research I've been doing up and down the coast, basically all the towns were where we are now. They were handing out permits indiscriminately, and what the towns have found is that they need to be regulated in a serious way, otherwise, because, because big money moves in, and and we've heard what happens. We don't have residents that are serving on committees, we don't have, we have, the fire department has been looking for firefighters for quite a while. So basically, what the cities have done is they've gone from ground zero, we are at ground zero. We have, we have been giving out permits for vacation rentals when no vacation rental even exists. It's the, it's the ordinary way of doing this, that a vacation rental permit will be given out once the property has been inspected, the parking has been inspected, the health and safety, the smoke detectors, all that stuff. The paperwork has all been done. So we can't, we're not gonna allow that, I don't believe we'll allow that precedent to continue. There are many precedents that we're not going to, I believe we're not going to allow to continue. And I, and I think glossing over the issue of whether vacation rentals are, might, that they might be allowed. So from the research I've been doing, most of the towns up and down the coast have restricted vacation rentals because of the effects that, perceived negative effects of vacation rentals on their towns. And I will say, from looking up and down the coast and looking at Port Orford, we are a gold mine. If we don't restrict this, put a cap on, or take them, not allow them to be in the R1 and R2 zones, we're gonna lose our town. One of the city councillors has already talked about in various conversations, that we are basically teetering with our water supply, many, many issues with income for the city, the issues we have. If we get, if we get a number of vacation rentals in this town that is too great, I believe we will lose the town for what it is and for why we want to live here. So I would like to draw the view back a little bit. I think that the details of the parking and the TLT money and all that is, those are details. I believe we have to fundamentally look at what we want to do. All these other towns, if you look at the document I submitted, a brief overview and possible approaches to short-term rental managing in Port Orford, it starts with a list of minimal management, and it goes through to quite restrictive management. These procedures of doing this are all, we don't have to worry about, there are procedures for, for taking the rentals out of the residential areas, if that's what we want to do. I'm not suggesting we do it, I'm just saying we need to look at it, and we need to invite the community to decide what we want to do before we start working on the details and gloss over this other issue. I'm afraid for the life of our town. So for example, one of the methods that are used for, for the existing vacation rentals, the towns don't just say, oh, you can't have, be a vacation rental anymore. What they do is they will, they will have the owners, they'll furnish a permit for a certain amount of time so that the person can amortize or get their investment back from their business. Or another thing they'll do is they'll allow it to be there for the life of the person, so that the people who have vacation rentals existing don't lose, but yet it saves the quality of the town. Vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods are actually take of the neighborhood to create an ambiance. of the neighborhood to, to create an ambiance businesses can use to make money. Most of it's out of town money. So I would, I would just suggest we, we not go to the details and we draw back and we listen to the people who are making public comments. A number of people have contacted me, uh, they feel that we need to restrict this. So I'm just suggesting we, we take another look at this.
Thank you. And the one thing I do want to mention though is that the business licenses are up June 30th. So we got to put something in place by then. I mean, I think we can look past then, but are we going to have this conversation where we have this unmitigated growth for another year? Or can we put something in place so then by June 30th, we have something in place for the next cycle while we continue to work?
And what is the importance of it, uh, uh, of the June 30th? Can't, can't they be, can't there be a, a, a put on hold for that?
No, because then they'll be operating illegally. If they do not have a business license and then are required to pay us the T L T tax at that point then.
Okay.
Also then we would lose all that.
Well, we would lose the, the portion of them that are in, uh, in residential zones. So Jessica, last week or at the last meeting, Commissioner, Commissioner Nera asked for a list, a detailed list of, of all of the short-term rentals in Port Orford and where they were located, the addresses. Was that list made, please?
It was not, it is about five, it's, oh, I mean, I know that Sarah did a request. It's 575 pages I have to go through. And unfortunately, I talked to Commissioner Neerath and he knows. I have, um, been tested positive for COVID, so I've been working from home. Until I, um, am able to get back into the office.
Oh.
So when I'm able to get back into the office, then I will search, search to work on that, but I'm working from home until everything is better right now.
So, um, I'd like to suggest that we, that in, in light of the fact that we do have this June deadline, that perhaps we follow through with some of the things that we know makes sense. For instance, um, send the list to every existing short-term rental. The checkoff list of things that they need to have. And, and it could serve as both, um, a, a kind of a safety list. It could serve as a means of saying we plan to start checking these things with you. And, um, I, I do agree that I think in order for us to create some kind of mapping system so that we know exactly where these are in terms of R1 and R2, how close together they might be. We can't really create these rules unless we know if, if there are, you know, things like, for instance, that we've talked about, um, having, uh, an individual own more than one, uh, vacation rental in R1 and R2. Having them closer than 300 feet from one another. Having ample parking. All of those things need to be, I know they're the details on, on some level. However, they also need to be included in order to move forward with this. I, I think it's sort of a combination of details and refining what are, is going to be required in the future.
Well, so then my question is, is what are the, what's the checklist? So for example, I look on page, I believe it's 15. When we talk about smoke and carbon monoxide detector, which I don't think is a bad thing to have, but who does it? Who are we going to have do it? Okay, so who checks it? That's my question.
And one of the things that, um, when you guys think about these checklists is, remember that within the city, well, the city does not have a, you know, a specific building inspector just for the city. So we have to go by the county. The county is the only one that does that. There's two of them, individual, two of them that we work with. And so we want to make sure that we don't tie them up crazily. Because I don't think we can either based upon them being city, being county employees and not city employees. So just remember that too, as we're doing some.
Is it, is it a requirement by the city to have someone in like an official capacity? Or could it be done by volunteers?
I think it couldn't be volunteers for sure. I think it would have to be someone in official capacity, 100%.
I think that takes the liability out for the city. I think that anything that we do a checklist or for example, a safety inspection, that has to be done by somebody who is qualified to do that. So then this, this is what I think we have to remember. Is that who in our city does this? If we have to go to the county, then how far out is the county? So I think we have to remember too, is the capacity of our, of our city to do these things.
So, so someone needs to check with the county and somebody needs to, to, to research, make a call or two to the, some of these other, uh, towns. Where, how do they get theirs done? Whether the, someone is authorized by the county to do it or, or whoever. I know, I do know that, that it's common for, uh, the fees those inspections. Jessica, I was just, I wanted to just backtrack just a, a bit. When, if, if, if we're considered, uh, concerned about renewing licenses in June as, as one of our, of our motion points here, one of our, one of our driving forces. Is it conceivable to have a provisional license until, until the code, until such time that the uh, planning commission or the, or the civic council has adopted new new short-term rental rules? That would just basically, we, we stay where we are, but we give notice that we are looking for, uh, uh, a permanent way, uh, or at least a, uh, getting up to date way to, uh, to legislate, to regulate the, the short-term rentals. Would provisional?
I think it is. You just have to, the biggest thing that I keep going back to, and I know that, so does Commissioner Neerath, is that, you know, you think about the additional staff, the additional staff time needed for provisional because then you're bringing them back in to do, you know, to do anything else. And so just think about that. And the reason I'm saying that is just because like right now I have a position open at City Hall for an accounting job. Um, and I can't, I haven't got, I've gotten maybe one application in the last three months. And so with that being said, then that is landing back on my lap in order to do all the accounting on top of the rest of the stuff that I do. And so with that, then we're adding another thing for them to come back on. And if we don't have another person yet in any of those, so I, I'm just thinking about the strain that, that it could possibly have on my staff and myself.
Well, I, it, it would, I mean, just to simply, just to simply say, when, when the renewal date comes to say, okay, we're, we're basically renewing this. You know, at no extra cost, we're just, it's checking whatever, whatever, whatever procedure goes through right now, which is evidently okay, that, uh, we can do within the limits of the, of the worker power that we have. To just say, okay, well, this is, this is going to be provisional at such a time when we get our, uh, procedures in place. That probably that your fee is going to be higher because you're going to be, uh, you're going to need to pay for the inspection and you're going to need to pay for this, that, or the other thing. Basically, that, basically that the, the license for the short-term rental is going to cover whatever extra cost that it is, when that, but that would be, uh, put forward to when that cost is. So in June, they're just basically passing it over to a to a non-fixed, but, uh, uh, a, a date when this process would be finished.
You, I have a, I have a clarifying question. Do you mean that?
I would take this out.
Do you mean, Greg, that it would, you would say like, we're going to have you pay the business license, but once we get it together, let's say December 1st, and that fee would come about? Is that what you're talking about?
The fee would be, it would be a provisional fee or it would even be, uh, yeah, it would be a provisional fee, uh, until the next, until it comes about. And maybe it's, maybe the first year it's not any higher or, or, I mean, that, that seems like it's uh, pretty straightforward. Or maybe there's no fee. I don't know. May, maybe it's just passed on, uh, and you'll get a refund of the amount of fee that you didn't use, uh, if we're done in November or October, whenever, and at which time there will be a new fee.
Can you do that, Jessica? Can you say business license until this time? And then halfway through, we're going to increase the fee and you have to pay it more? Or is it easier just to do it at the time? You're on mute.
Sorry, my brain's still kind of, um, it's, it's obviously easier to do it all at once. I, I mean, but I mean, it's possible. It's just a matter of, I mean, like what your thing was saying. So let's say, you know, if there is an increase and they get a refund, I mean, that's a million steps. So that's something that because not only with that, then I only have someone here part-time to issue checks. So if they need refunds and only someone here part-time to issue checks, that's a whole nother ballgame. So I don't know if we would necessarily go about it that way. What we would probably do at that point, if that's what we decide to do, is just keep whatever they're paying right now. And then as things progress, then turn around because that would just 25, I mean, it's 25 bucks. Trust me, they'll go through that. It doesn't take long. So, you know, I mean, that, that's, that would probably be the easiest way if that's the way we decide to go about it, but, um, obviously trying to get everyone, um, in that, in that aspect, I guess then my, my question would be then what was the whole point for the moratorium to stop issuing the business licenses? Because we're then, are we just only not issuing new ones then still? Are we just reissuing the old one? I mean, that's a whole nother question and ballgame than that we would have to address between now and then.
I would, I would imagine we would continue with the ones we have. I mean, the, the order from the, from the council was to not issue any new ones. So I, I think renewing one is, is, uh, falls under that.
Yeah, I agree with you, Greg. I think, um, renewing makes more sense. Adding an additional fee for inspections makes sense to me as well. I thought the moratorium was in place for a year in order to really create, um, a, a system by which we determine where we want to have these. And if we can continue, um, to issue new, uh, licenses.
It was, yeah, it's up for up to a year. They gave it open-ended. Just so that if you finished it early, then that was fine. That was, that's how it is. So it's up to a year right now.
Well, in terms of thinking, I think of what we need to do, and I don't disagree with you, Greg. I think we need to step out and do a fundamental thought process. The problem is, is we know things take a long time to get into place. So we want to step out and look at this whole shebang as a picture. Or do we want to step out, look at it as a picture, but in the meantime, step in and say, the ones we have now, here are the things we're looking for. Because I think one of the things that we want to do is we want to hurry up and wait. And as a business owner, if I pay my business fee and pay it under these certain rules and then halfway through the year, you go, just kidding, here's some more rules that you have to implement and I'm going to make you pay more, I'm not going to be very happy. I just think that's as a business owner in general. So while I don't disagree the fact that we should step out and look in, in general on how we want to define things for our city and how in the future. We need to actually get something in place and look at some details. So by the time June 30th rolls around, there are some details and we can put some things into place. Because last time Sarah had the public comment where she has a vacation rental next to her. And she said they were having problems with people going down and using their docks. Sarah didn't know who to call. And I think, you know, one of the details is, is every vacation rental needs to have a contact person. So if we don't put those little things in place, there's another year of Sarah having to possibly deal with these people going down to her docks and using them and trespassing and not being able to deal with that particular piece. And so I think to me, I see it in other commissioners, you can jump in too. I see it as a two-fold. I'm kind of a, let's get down to the nitty gritty and get some things in place while we talk about how do we look in our ordinances? Because we have to have something in place for those the pleasing of how they're being used now, even though we're at not adding new ones in, how are the ones that we're using? What do we expect of them now? And then how do we look in the future? I think by not having some details put into place before June 30th, I think we're doing a disservice for a whole nother year. That's just my opinion.
I, I, I agree, Commissioner, uh, that it would be, uh, good to have some in place. And, and I think that what we put in place should fit in with our, what our overall view is going to be. So there's going to be, I think there's going to be a kind of a we're going to have to kind of predict what we want to do in some ways, maybe, uh, but certainly, certainly requiring, uh, uh, you know, a safety inspection, uh, requiring, well, you know, I, I'm of, I'm of a mixed feeling here because it, it probably wouldn't take, I mean, it wouldn't, we would have this done by the end of the year. June is halfway through the year. I, I must, I'm guessing we would have this done in the fall if, if we get, you know, public, uh, interest and people, every, all the, all the, what you call them, the stakeholders involved in this. So it would be just a matter of a few months of, of an extension. But I, I, I hear what you're saying and I, and I agree that there's some basic things, uh, some basic things in place.
Well, because I think when you look at our survey, the one that Jessica and I looked at, I think that's a basic, very short term. What do you think we're okay about? You know, so then by June, here are the six things that we have to look at that are good neighborhood policies. And we're raising it, you know, the business license for short-term vacation rentals to $450 so that we can pay for things like the safety inspection or the code enforcement or the three strikes you're out, you know, idea. I do think though, it's easy to say, and I'm an employer in the city. It's easy to say, well, we can just get people to do this. Nitty gritty and Jessica knows, come down to it, I worry every year to make sure I have enough employees to cover what I have. And it's easy for me to say, I'm going to have a second grade classroom or I'm going to have, you know, a science teacher. And then August comes around, two weeks before we're supposed to do it, and I may not have one. And so I don't also want to paint the city into the corner to say, they have to do all these things. And then who has to do it? The city administrator that's already working two jobs or the part-time person? Or, you know, I think that we also have to be cognizant. It's great to put these ordinances and these rules in place. The thought then is, who does it? So I think when we think about what do we want, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, Greg, I think we need to go to that place of where does, where do, where do those things mesh between short and long-term visions? But we also have to be realistic about what our city can handle. Who's going to do what? If Jessica already said there's only two building inspectors in Port or in the county um, to do safety inspections. So what if they can't do the safety inspections till July? So does that mean every short-term vacation rental we have is no longer going to be in place? You know, things like that. I think that we just have to think it's great to say that all these things need to happen. But the capacity of people in this day and age of where we're struggling as, as a town for employment and to get these things, it's really hard to, to do that. Go ahead, Crystal.
Muted.
You're on mute.
I don't think a lot of these things on this checklist would be something that the building inspector would be involved in.
Right.
I mean, a lot of these aren't building, they aren't building.
Safety inspection. I don't know what that entails. And somebody said it's state law for, to have smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. So who does that? Do we do the buildings inspector? You know, those are the types of things I think we really, it's great to say we want it done, you know, but when the rubber meets the road.
Well, the, the building inspector doesn't do those for rentals is what I'm saying. And a lot of what those vacation rentals are is where, um, I think it's Vacasa. I'm not sure of the name of it, but it's, it looks like that when I'm thinking of it. They're writing to people with rentals. When I'm thinking of it, they're writing to people with rentals every month and suggesting that they change over to um. Work with them and um have them manage it. I I assume that's happening in Port Orford. I get one of those from them every month. And they say that I can make a lot of money, you know, by doing that. It's really a go-ahead to try to. Um, get more vacation rentals. And I don't, I don't think that the building inspector is gonna do most of these checks. That's, I'm just sharing that.
So Jessica, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Is it state law that vacation rentals have to have smoke and carbon monoxide detectors?
Um, yes, there's actually another state law that's coming into effect or coming down the pipe, um if it has not already. That is also saying that bas- basically vacation rentals have to be, are gonna be treated the same as hotels. In those aspects with regards to fire safety, meaning sprinklers and stuff like that, too. Um, that came up. Um, I'm gonna say I heard, I, that came up probably about four or five months ago from the Cuse. Um, City of Cus Bay, um, City Administrator Roger had sent me an article about it. Um, it hasn't passed and it hasn't come through yet. But it is happening down the pipe very soon. So there's gonna be some other laws with regards to that, too.
So who would be responsible in ensuring those things happen?
Um, more than likely, probably the fire, some sort of fire department is my thought process.
So would we pay our volunteer firefighters to go on and do that?
We would probably have to, yes.
Okay.
So I have a thought.
I want to.
Um. Obviously, businesses like VRBO, Airbnb, Vacasa, all of them. Want, this is big business for them. So they want to assist in any way that they possibly can. Um, maybe a direct question to one of those groups. Um, in terms of, would they be willing to provide some kind of inspection service? Um, for any vacation rental that is under their realm? I know that they will collect TLT taxes.
No, they do not, not all of them. That's the catch twenty-two. They do not, all of them do not do that. That is.
Airbnb does.
No, Airbnb does not, actually. They do on certain jurisdictions, but they do not within the city of Port Orford. And that I have told, and it's actually listed on their website, they do not for TLT tax for the city of Port Orford.
So that just changed in in this new year?
No, it's been going on forever and ever and ever. They never have collected the TLT tax for the city of Port Orford. There's a list of jurisdictions on their website. And we are not listed as one of them. And yes, I have heard that they collect the TLT tax, but they do not pay it to us. So they're holding on to it. And I have told multiple people, and multiple people are aware of it and have gone after them back for their money. But no, Airbnb does not collect the TLT tax, nor do they, they do not collect it and remit it to us.
Okay, well, I know someone with an Airbnb. Um, and and they have been allowing that. Business to collect taxes for them.
Yep, and it is not submitted to the city of Port Orford. I have just talked to four or five different people this month alone.
Okay. That's, that's appalling. Yeah. Um, yeah, that's pretty disconcerting. Okay.
Uh, I would be willing to contact uh a a couple of city uh uh plant- planners, uh the planning department and. And some of the towns that have, that are requiring inspections and find out, just kind of get a a lay of the land of who gets to do it.
I think that would work, because I think one of the things we have to do is I think it has to be a licensed person for liability purposes for the city.
Yeah, I I can, I can find out who they, how they do that.
Awesome. Okay, so I think one of the things, though, that we do need to do is the council has asked us. Um, to, let me see if I can get it. To have a definition for hotel, motel, and what else, Jessica, and what a short-term vacation versus a long-term rental. So I think we need to find those four definitions. Is anybody willing to bring some definitions for us? Back to the next meeting.
I'll I'll look them up and and uh. You want that for now or for next time?
Can we do it for next time? So we wanna do, Jessica, let's make sure. Hotel, motel, short-term rent, short-term vacation, or just short-term rentals?
Short-term rental.
And long-term rentals. What's the difference?
Right, and then lodging also. We should probably have a definition for lodging or something like that also.
Okay, so I've got.
I've actually. I've looked at some of these things up, and I have uh I have that information for several, several. And what happens is each town is slightly different depending on how they uh, how they integrate. Uh, how they integrate, what kind of a system they use uh uh. Between zoning and and uh and uh licensing. Uh, like, for example, some will say, well, I create a category of short of vacation rental, and in that big, in the, in that will be short-term rental. And in that will be homestay. Uh. Uh, it's kind of a big, it's kind of an, I believe it's kind of an overview question that is gonna fit into whatever we decide we're going to do. Uh, as far as with whether we're going to be doing any land use stuff with the our zone or or whatever. It it's kind of a big que- it's kind of a big question. It's a detail in a big question.
Go on, Crystal. You're muted.
I'm so sorry. It also has to fit with what you already have in your code. I mean, if you're going to start defining things, uh you don't wanna change what they mean so that. The zones that you already have set up with those things become not in sync or something with what. The city's been doing. So it is kind of a big issue when you, when we start defining.
Okay, so I guess then I don't know where to go now, because that was.
I'm willing to uh take whatever, I mean, if people suggest things, take them and try to. Send them through the code to see what that would mean and do some kind of a staff report on that or something. I think you guys are really good at research and um, you know, I don't see why I would have to do that. But I I think that I would be helpful probably in looking at the code and seeing how that might fit into the code.
I think, yeah, that would be great, because I, Jessica put in there, and I don't see it, Jessica, I've attached the code definitions from Cus Bay code, which are very specific about what lodging. Hotel, motel, and vacation rentals are. And I don't, that doesn't mean I don't have it. I don't see it in our packet.
It's, yeah, it's not, it was in, it was in the forty-five pages submitted to City Council. I don't think you guys wanted all forty-five pages.
So, I mean, maybe we could get some just definitions and then have Crystal look and say, these three wouldn't work, but let me run these two through your code. Um, because I would agree, I think we need to have that. But I think really, we need to move out of theoretical and start moving towards where we're going. And so maybe that's where we start, is maybe we look at what those definitions are and how they would fit. Um, but I guess the question would be for everybody is, do we wanna do a short term so we get for the business license? I guess I'm confused on where our conversation is now going. What is our action steps besides now we have definitions? What is our next action step? Because I hear a lot of this, and I I I'm more of a, let's get moving, because we know. That we probably will have to have a public hearing, which is a thirty-five day process, and then it goes to City Council. I wanna get some action steps going and and get some research going so we can make this move forward and not chew on something for a year or so. Go ahead, Pamela.
So is the goal then to have something to present to the City Council for their next meeting? Um, whether we have all the pieces of the puzzle figured out? Or are are we thinking that we wanna do it in its entirety? Or um, just focused on what we need to. Um, have prepared for June?
Well, I think, let's look at the survey. We've been at, we talked about doing a survey last meeting. Um, I appreciate what Ann said in in the public comment. Maybe we need to put a little background info on there. I would agree with that. Maybe we need to put a little info so people understand. But. I mean, some of the questions that Jessica and I talked about, you can do a lot of open-ended questions, but then who's gonna sit and go through everything and find themes? I think the questions that her and I really tried to do are very, you know. Here are the top two priorities of, if we were to keep vacation rentals and have a good neighborhood policy, what is important to that community, that that neighborhood? Are we supporting a location limit, that they can't be any closer together, that blah, 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 blah? Can we support a, a uh, require additional time by staff, so can we support a higher initial license fee? Um, do you support a complaint process? Or do you want them at all? Um, you know, I mean, I think we need to be very clear. And I'll tell you, as somebody who does a lot of surveys, um, with our community. Our community is very much an oral type of community, which means if we send this out, we may only get thirty to thirty-five percent of them back. So is that really then something that we're looking at the majority of what the community wants, or just the thirty-five percent of people who really do or understand? You know, that that print, they're willing to take a print, do the survey and get it back? Or is it something that we can have more of a conversation about in terms of, you know, do we sit out raise and talk to people about it? I don't know. You're not gonna get more. We just did a survey of our community in the school district, and we only had thirty percent of our community. Um, we have a hundred and forty-six families, and we only had forty-one families give us information. So we still have a hundred and two families who haven't given us that information. So is just this survey, just by sending it out, will we get enough information to come back? So I guess, you know, do we send it out anyways and then maybe see where we're at in terms of, you know, is it a fifty-fifty split? Is there one side more than another? Did we really get a good piece of our community stakeholders? Um, I don't know. I guess for me, where where do we need to have next time? Do we do, we look at the the definitions? Do we do the vacation rentals and get our data off of there? Do we think we have enough data, so on and so forth? Go ahead, Jessica.
Um, my, uh, when we did the emergency management risk mitigation survey, out of all of um. Curry County, we got, we got a very, very small percentage. I think we have a twenty-five or thirty just out of our um. In Port Orford, so keep that in mind. And that I was handing out physical ones at City Hall as people were coming in. We had links to it on our website. We had links to it going all over our Facebook, and still, we only had like one or thirty of those that were turned in. So.
Two percent is considered the norm, just.
Again, I'm sorry.
Two percent is considered the normal response. Um, from any kind of advertising, um, you know, announcements, surveys. All of that kind of rolled together. So if if a thousand went out. And and we got two percent of that, that would be, what? Two hundred?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty, because we only have a thousand, a thousand one hundred and five people within the city limits of.
Yeah.
So.
Tw- twenty wouldn't help, one way or another, really.
You're saying everyone helps?
No, and I I think that's important to still get our data and say, is this really representative of what our, of our city? Um, you know, I was very, I was very happy we got thirty percent, but I now know, you know, based on my data, there's seventy percent of people I didn't hear from. And so I think maybe we do, maybe we need to get some data. So I do think we need to look at the survey. And get some very clear-cut data and really decide if we wanna move forward on the data, or if we wanna collect more. Um, and I think that will really help us then look at kind of how everything fits together. Go ahead, Crystal.
No, I I just wanted to introduce Wei Rodomski. She's our DLCD person, and she's had her hand up for quite a while.
Hi.
Hi. Hello, um, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak. Um, I'm Hui Rodomski. I'm the South Coast Regional Representative for DLCD. Um, Department, Department of Land Conservation and Development, which is the state lead agency for land use. Um, I just wanna say a few things. Um, first is, obviously, the city had to decide what it wants. Um. Another thing is, you know, I think from some, some of the comments uh that Greg has ma- made is that. Do we wanna look at more, a bigger um. Um, your realm of facts, um, besides just um the vacation rental, short-term rental. Um, how, you know, the fees are, or how the city em- emisters it. Um. Obviously, but you you all know that short-term rentals impact housing stock, um, which has a huge. Or a huge ripple effect of through a community where people can't afford to rent or buy. And therefore, they can't actually take the jobs that are in the city because they can't live in that area. Um, and um, so, and I would suspect in your survey that renters and homeowners will, property owners. Will have different opinions of, you know, where they would like short rentals or not um in the city. Um, so, you know, so I think. You know, besides the how the city can regulate or how to carries out regulations. Is the bigger ecology or ecosystem of how this impacts the rest of your city? You know, as Greg said, he he's, you know, um, fierce for the community, that it might be all. Vacation rentals soon or whatever, you know, I mean, probably not soon, but you know, um, that you lose your character um of Port Orford. Um, so I guess my comments um thus far is just to. Kind of urge you to look beyond how the city, how much money you get, how much does it cost to regulate, how much this and that. But really look at even a little bit bigger, um, your housing stock and and what are housing needs. Um, and to that end, um, Cuse and Curry County, they have currently a grant from um DLCD. To do a regional housing needs analysis for Cuse and Curry. So and and in addition to that, we also, um, as a statewide effort, we are also trying to do housing analysis on a regional level. And currently, we're looking at um, considering Curry County um as its own region. Whereas and Cuse County maybe as its own region, but just, just to let you know that, I know there are um efforts um statewide. To try to figure out, you know, what's, what's the housing affordability situation look like, you know, what's the housing crisis um look like in different regions? And what can we do to really alleviate that? Because obviously, you know, if we can have people live in communities, um, own homes. Have stable lives, they'd be contributing, contributing to the community, you know, build a community, don't move around the whole time because they couldn't find houses to live. I mean, there are planners and on the North Coast who had to actually move out of state because they couldn't find. Um, something affordable in their own town. So, you know, it's. What you're facing is not, um, obviously, you need, you know that, um, to Port Orford. Um, and I just urge you to look beyond how to regulate and see what the effect, the impact of it is. On the rest of your housing um stock in your community. Thank you.
So Hugh, then I have a question. How would you suggest we go about that? Because it's easy to say to go about, to that we wanna look, and it is a regional plan. But for us as the Planning Commission, we have got, Mr. Vernon, this is not a public comment point at this point. You can talk about it towards the end. Thank you. We have been, we have been, um, we have been, um. Asked by the City Council to create short-term vacation ordinances. So my question then is, I don't really know how to go about what the City Council wants us to do if we're gonna look at this long-term. Because I think, so that's my question to you now, is.
Sure, yeah, yeah, no.
At this point, I'm I'm actually struggling with this conversation, because I have no idea where we're.
Well, um, you know, you can always do um a temporary measure and then change it, you know. Um, after, say, if somebody's housing needs analysis come out and you have a better picture of what housing stock is like in the area. And maybe make, you know, set your caps differently if that's the way, you know, whoever wants to go. Um, there are other um cities where, you know, they have, um, they have caps and um. The license actually runs with the property and, but if it changes hands, then that's, then that that goes back in the pool. So then, um, so it's kind of, you know, you were combining houses, you had to go, yeah, so anyways, if you sell your house, then that house itself loses the VRD license. And then, and you, uh, and then if, you know, they don't apply, then they won't get it again. Um, but anyways, there are different ways people are are regulating. I'm not saying that, you know, obviously. obviously can solve, you know, the worst problems with, you know, or soon, um, but, uh, all I'm saying is to just, uh, you know, maybe have something temporary or, or don't think that, you know, you won't change it later. Uh, because these housing needs analysis are going to come out, these studies are going to come out and they will inform.
Well, and I think that's where I'm trying to get the conversation going is we need to put, recommend something like the business license belongs with the house and the person until that person, like we need to get those things going. Go ahead, Jessica.
That's already in place. Business licenses are non-transferable. They're only issued to that one person and that one thing. So that is already in place within the business license.
So I think for us, I think we need to then decide for our next meeting, because it is four forty-five, we still have some other stuff to go. Where are we going? So we wanted to do the definition. So Pamela, you would say you would get some definitions for the next meeting, correct?
Right.
Okay. Do we want to look? I actually agree with you. I thought this was a great one. And Jessica, I would probably put this on the short-term vacation survey. Are you a renter or a homeowner? Because I actually do think it might be different answers based on that. Um, I do think we need to get some data from our community. So I'd like to do a very, I think open-ended surveys sometimes are too hard to really interpret. Does anybody see based on the survey, which is page nineteen, is there any other questions we can add to it that are something quick and easy that give us some really good data? Go ahead, Crystal.
Well, I missed the first part of the meeting because I was having trouble getting in. But, so I, I don't have the survey, but I just wanted to say that, um, I think what Wei is Rodemsky from DLCD was talking about is probably what we would think about if we're thinking about zoning issues is how many of these do we want and where do we want them? And how do we get there? As one of the first steps along with definitions, because as Greg said, you know, you, those are the big picture things. And then it's how, for the ones that we're going to have or keep or maintain, then how are we going to regulate them? But I'm a little concerned that we haven't really talked about that unless I missed it.
I really, I'll be honest with you all. I'm kind of at a, I'm at a, I'm at a loss because I don't really know where to go. I'll be quite honest with you. Um, do I think that completely getting rid of vacation rentals in R1 and R2 specifically, because that's where we've been asked, will fly with the city council? I don't. And so then it becomes of how do we figure out a cap? So there's a question in there. How do, would you support a location limit? For example, vacation rentals that cannot be closer than three hundred feet of an existing vacation rental. To me, that's where we're talking about the support of a cap. So then we look at, that's question number two on the survey. So then it would be okay if we have vacation rentals and we say, here's one and here's the three hundred yard. I think that would then give us numbers to say, what would the cap be? Um, I think, you know, I don't know. I guess I'm at a, I'm at a loss because I don't really know where to our next steps at the next meeting. Um, but I will tell you, I would be very surprised if we say we want no vacation rentals in R1 and R2 if the council would actually take that um, and vote on it and vote it through. I think, you know, what we've gotten from the council is, is they want to look and they want to look at restrictions on how we do our um, vacation rentals. Um, I will also tell you, I guess, in looking at the long-term rental laws, I don't know if a lot of people would want to be a long-term rent, uh, long-term landlord due to the tenant laws that have been passed in the state of Oregon. I'll be quite honest with you. I think it, based on some conversations I've had with people who are looking at selling their houses, I don't know if that would be something, would this push people into that direction knowing those laws are there? I don't know. Jessica?
I can tell you that more than likely, no, it would not. Um, I can tell you, I've had people that have come in and said that if they were, if they could not do short-term rentals, that that is the total opposite way that they would go. They would rather sell their place than do a long-term rental just because of the issues that they've had with renters in the past. And even myself has had issues with long-term renters in the past and took us almost a year and a half to get them out after them not paying rent for that long and destroying the place. And so it is what it is. It stinks and it's not the best, but it is what it is.
However, the same could happen with a short-term rental as far as destruction, property, et cetera. Right. But I hear your point. Um, I honestly, on the, um, on the survey, I don't think number three is relevant. I, I think we don't need to ask permission to charge a fee. I think, uh, the city just decides what the fee is. Um, so I would be inclined to say eliminate that one. And, um, and, and I would like to make a suggestion that for now, what we do is look at the most common requirements for vacation rentals on that checklist and, and agree to either include all of these or X, X out some, um, or add some. Um, but so one through eighteen is what I'm referring to. Because I think that would get this rolling and started.
Thoughts, Commissioners?
Well, I think we definitely need to consider the survey or getting, um, uh, a more mixed group of people to, um, weigh in on this because I'm getting a real feel of, uh, currently the majority of who's weighing in are people who are speaking from places of privilege of either not only owning a home, but maybe it sounds like also owning rental place, like that, that's a huge place of privilege speaking from and you're maybe missing the big picture of why we need to be doing this. Um, which is that it's destroying the housing market and young people are being pushed out, poor people are being pushed out. This is like an emergency. I, I, I'm also kind of at a loss.
I definitely think, uh.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, yeah, Commissioner, when you were, when you were talking about the various things that were on the, the, uh, the, uh, the survey, you said, do we want them at all? I wrote that down when you said it and it's true. I think we need to say, we need to ask whether we need to look beyond what we think the city council is going to do, they would like. We need to look, we need to at least look and include the community in, in the fundamental question. There have been a number of towns on the Oregon coast that have, that have, uh, eliminated STRs from our zones and those towns are doing fine. Warrenton is doing fine. Banden is doing fine. Depot Bay is doing fine. It, it is doable. If, if we can't, I don't think we can second guess the, the, uh, the city council. A- a- at least, at least we need to find out what, what the people want, what, what our citizens want. If we're going to ask them a survey, let's not, let's not ask them what we think they want. Let's ask them what they might want.
I, and, and question everyone, my big thing is, is that I then caution everyone to be aware that it could financially affect the city in an adverse way. We may not be able to do those grants that we do to the main street. We may not be able to pay for the TLT, the tourism dollars that we already do for the advertising, may not be able to. So keep all that in mind when you do that, because then that opens up a whole nother can of worms that could financially impact the city in a negative way.
So Jessica, the, um, the information that I got from, from towns up and down the coast, the towns that have actually eliminated or are, basically what they're doing is they're, uh, they're, they're not ending them right now. They're saying, okay, when you, we, we basically, we basically see that it's, it's a not a listed use in the R-zone. The, the, a, a, uh, a, um, an industry has caught up with our antiquated land use rules. The, the spirit of the land use rules are not being followed. We were not aware of that. So we are now caught in a position. And in order to deal with that, we're not going to, we're not going to say you can't have your investment here in our community anymore. What we're saying is when you die or if you, if you sell this property, it's, it's not going to be a, a rental in, in the, in the, uh, in the, uh, residential area. It doesn't affect anything in the commercial area. And a number of them are in the commercial areas and that's wouldn't make any difference. Or the ten NU, I imagine, wouldn't make any difference. But in the residential, so they're not, it's not like we'd lose it. And what I guess is that, is that the, the short-term rentals would move into the commercial zones. That's what we want. I mean, that's what, it's a business.
But there is no space in the commercial zone either. That's the catch twenty-two.
There's no, uh, do you know how many, uh, how much space there is available?
There's literally, there's almost, there's very little. I mean, very, very little unless you're willing to build, um, start from scratch. I mean, think about it. There's not a lot out there unless, I mean, the amount of, the, the amount that right now that it costs for just a piece of land, a small piece of land is very high right now. Um, I mean, think about, I mean, obviously I see Mr. Vernon on here and I know that he, that he was looking at some property and that small piece of land is a, is a small fortune. Um, and so that's the other thing that you have to think about too. And I think if I remember correctly, Mr. Vernon was actually, his portion that we were talking about is in a commercial zone.
Mm-hmm. I, which brings up.
There are people who are taking that point, you know, doing that, um, buying land or land that they already own and building in the, the zones that our ordinances and codes say it's okay to have a vacation rental. Um, so, um, and, and to kind of go back to what Bailey was talking about, um, it's not just anyone who is going to have a vacation rental. Um, it's usually somebody who is already a homeowner and probably has the financial means to either buy a home or build a home. Uh, it's personal opinion, but, um.
So what I think, it, it's close to five and we still have more on our agenda. So what I would ask is let's make action plans for next time. So Jessica, um, her and I work together. I do like the question, do you support having short-term rentals, rentals in residential zones? We have to remember though, when we ask those questions, we have to be prepared for any answer and we may not like them. They, if we have a majority of our town says yes, then we have to go that direction. Um, but with, if the majority of our town says no, then there's going to be financial ramifications for it. And so I think, you know, Jessica and I can work on it, but we have to remember, you know, we have to get some data. Um, so I think let's look at Jessica, let's look at the survey. Pamela, if you could, um, do those definitions. And then maybe we go through and next time as Commissioners, we discuss the most common, the checklist, one through eighteen, and we maybe bring our top, each of us brings our top seven that we want to talk about, because maybe our top seven, maybe out of the seven, there's four that everybody picked and that's where we go from. How does that sound? Okay.
Sounds like a team.
Perfect. So Commissioners for next meeting, under the most common, um, please pick, please bring a list of your top seven, just kind of based on research and maybe conversations. Please bring a list of your top seven that you would pick out of that eighteen and let's see where we land there.
Um, if you want to, just to make it a little bit, you guys can submit it to me and then I can include it all in the packet, kind of all together. So everyone sees everyone's information all together at the same time.
Perfect. So let's do that. Commissioners, if you can get that to Jessica, no later than March twenty-first, then that gives her almost two weeks to get it compiled and in the actual, um, uh, the actual, um, the, the next, uh, agenda packet for our March, or April fifth meeting. So, okay, so March twenty-first. Okay. So we have three action items we'll work on. Okay. So next on our list would be, uh, other business. Uh, that is agenda item seven. Uh, announcements and communications. So then we have city planner comments. That's on page twenty-two. So go ahead, Crystal.
Okay, I have two things to comment on tonight. Um, first, as you know, the city of Port Orford has an urban growth boundary. And the urban growth boundary is an area that is set up for the city to grow. Ours is quite large because that was envisioned at the time that the, um, code was developed and organized. And, um, you'll want to hang on to that because uh, you can't really change those very easily. So you've got a good deal that a lot of cities don't have. But we're not, um, we're not there yet. We're not growing out into the urban growth boundary, which is fine. But the county is approving things in the urban growth boundary. Um, not often, but uh, recently, the city manager got a notice that there's a subdivision going in, seven lots, but it's right next to Cemetery Loop Road and it's right next to our city limits. So the city has an opportunity to communicate with the county of any desires that they have for that. And that's an important part of our urban growth boundary setup. It's a management agreement. All cities have them with the counties all through the state. So, um, I think we will actually have an opportunity to comment when it goes before the planning commission, but this comment was for their pre-application. And Jessica gave it to me and I went ahead and wrote something and I just want to share it with you so you kind of get the idea of what we're doing. So the most common thing that happens in an urban growth boundary is that at some point, maybe the city is told by DEQ or something to take over those lots because the septic starts failing or something happens and some of those people need to come into the city. It could be a whole variety of things. And that's when it starts being important as to how it's all laid out and how those things happen. So I did submit a request to the county. I don't know what they did with it because they've already had the meeting. I think it was today, maybe a couple of days ago. But, uh, the request that we put in, or I put it in on behalf of everybody, was that, um, they would put something on the deed that was like a no remonstrance clause so that if those people in those, um, lots, in those seven lots, which could be divided at some point too, you know, if people want to be in the city and they can't afford their lots and they figure they need smaller lots and they want to divide, then they might want to be in the city. So if you started having divisions and things like that and they wanted to, had to come into the city, then they wouldn't be able to remonstrate against being in a special district or something so that there, there could be ru- road improvements or uh, sewer or water or something like that that the city needs. So I just wanted to share it for you with you. It's kind of a general overall big picture thing. But, um, that's, that's how, what we did so far. And then the second item, you have a, a, um, memo in your packet. It has my logo at the top. And, um, this is talking about dwelling size and this is another big issue in Port Orford. Because we have had, uh, stick built and also manufactured housing under a thousand-foot level institutionalized for over thirty. under a thousand-foot level institutionalized for over thirty years. And the real question for you guys, as we're looking at affordable housing, and we're having people maybe, uh, wanting to build smaller housing now, we didn't have that for years. So this is kind of a recent thing, and, um, that, you know, that people want to do that, and that people are looking for options for doing that, or even people wanting their own home, uh, they want a manufactured home that's smaller or something, and we have to keep them always the same. You're not allowed to have a different size for manufactured home than you are for a stick-built home. So, um, I, I asked Wei to come here from DLCD today just to listen in, and she's going to say a few words too, because I'm recommending that this go to the Planning Commission, so that we start to talk about this issue before we lose opportunities for our residents or people that are moving here to have a, a little bit smaller home. And we're not talking about necessarily tiny homes, um, just to see if you would, uh, prefer a little bit smaller um, home than a thousand square foot. So you can read the memo, um, or you can ask me questions, or we can go on. And then Wei probably wants to say a few things too. Are there any questions?
Yes, uh, Crystal, this is Pamela, I have questions. So currently, um, guest houses are, are accepted within the city limits, is that not correct?
What is the question, I'm sorry?
The, the question is, um, if you have a, a, a structure on a property, you can also have a smaller guest house, is that correct?
We don't have that, uh, we don't have that provision. That was made for the cities over ten thousand, if I recall. And, um, we did bring it up as, I brought it up as an option at the Planning Commission, and it hadn't really, that, that hadn't really become an issue at that time, and so they didn't decide to deal with it. So this is a little bit different topic, but, um, if you ever wanted to look at that, you could.
Okay, and then what about ADUs?
Um, well, an ADU is one of those, that's what a lot of them were calling the guest houses. Um, that's an additional dwelling unit on the property, which we don't have that provision. But, we haven't looked at these things like the larger cities have, because we're not required to do that, and we don't have the money to, or the time to take on a lot of things. So these are all things that could be part of the conversation. But the one I'm bringing right now has to do with one house on one lot, and the minimum size for that house, whether it's a manufactured home or a stick-built home. I believe we've had maybe three requests, and I don't know how serious people were, but I think Patty got two at the zoning counter. And I think there was one for a, um, manufactured home, which that person didn't care, they were happy with the one thousand square foot, and we have, you know, some opportunities maybe before us right now, where somebody would be willing to build smaller ones. So it hasn't been a lot, but it's something we need to decide, we shouldn't just stick with a uh, thirty-year-old provision that was made at the time that two things were happening. Number one, they didn't have smaller manufactured homes than one thousand square feet, I believe, that you could live in as something that was, um, accredited or whatever it has to be. And then secondly, in those years, people weren't necessarily building that small homes as they are now, and they did at a previous time, because it just wasn't coming up as an issue. So, it's just something that I'm asking you to look at, and, um, if there's other questions, that's fine, or Wei can speak, yes. Uh, Greg?
I have, I have a question, yeah, is, would this be something that went through zoning? Would this be something through the Planning Commission with a, with hearing?
This is through, this would, this is zoning, because it's in your zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, it doesn't, every house doesn't come through the Planning Commission.
Right.
But you, you would be making the rules through the city council too.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Wei wants to say something, I believe.
Thank you, Crystal. Um, I just want to say is that, um, um, myself and my colleague at DLCD, and we've already discussed, um, this, um, issue of a thousand square feet minimum for Port Orford specifically, and, um, we are ready to provide you with information session, um, work session, whatever you want to call it, to inform you of, you know, what, um, other people are doing around, in the state, or what this, our DLCD is thinking internally, and just to help inform you, so you can make, um, you know, more informed decision. Uh, another thing I want to say is that, um, the tiny home, the so-called tiny home, is not regulated by building codes. Um, so the quote-unquote tiny home is not what we're talking about today, because that is too small to be, to actually, um, meet building codes. And, um, for the building codes, uh, folks, um, or the Oregon Social Code, um, they even have a term called small home, which is a home that's less than four hundred square feet. So that's even larger than the tiny homes you will see on TV that's built on like trailer beds, but it's flatbed trailers, where it's, you know, it's like hundred square feet, which don't meet, uh, which does not meet, uh, building codes. And, uh, the thousand-square-foot, um, minimum, as Crystal said, is kind of a relic of the past, and, um, really across the board in, in state of Oregon, that we're encouraging, um, everyone to actually remove that from your local code. You're allowed to, obviously, to, um, set that minimum if you want to. Um, but, with the housing crisis, um, and people wanting to live smaller, um, we're just recommending that, removing it, um, and that's really the point.
I think that came from DLCD at one time, but, uh, now it's a little outdated, probably.
Yes, yes. That, that is what I want to say, thank you.
So I just wanted to let one know in the Planning Commission that this is something that the city council has already, is talking about. Um, it was on as a continuing action, action item a few months ago, um, before a bunch of items happened um, with regards to the water and some other things. And so it will be on the agenda as another continuing item to bring back to you guys at some point. Um, I'm assuming it'll obviously be discussed this next city council um, that I know of as of right this second, so just so you guys know, so until it is, you know, a hundred percent passed down by them, this is kind of an FYI.
Now, Hugh, um, and I'm sorry if I'm saying your name incorrectly. How long of a training would DLCD, right, how long is that training?
Oh, well, it's, um, we, it's, we tailor to you, so, you know, just let me know what questions you want answered, and then I'll go back to my colleagues, say these are answers they're looking for, or the questions they're looking for answers to, or more information, more, more information on, and, uh, we will provide, you know, that information to you. And could, you know, we'll schedule it at your, obviously, your availability. It could be at, you know, one of your regular sessions or work sessions. Um, it should just be, I don't know, I assume as long as the session goes, an hour, two hours, however you want to go, um, but I would think around an hour, um, is a good start.
Okay, awesome.
Like a topical, you know, discussion.
Okay. Sorry, Crystal, I didn't mean to jump in your time, I was just wondering how long.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm done, thank you. And, and, and on my front, I just want to offer as well that, um, I can also provide basic land use training, um, for your Planning Commission. Um, I, I typically do two sessions of one hour about each, where the first one, I call it Part One, it's, um, just history and how land use has come about in Oregon, how it's set up in the state, and, you know, from state to local, um, communities. And the second part is, how do planning commissions, what is their role, and how do you make fair and partial decisions? So if you're interested in that, um, I can also provide that, it's free of cost, obviously, um, and at your, at your availability. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now on to Planning Commission comments. Commissioners, you guys have any comments? I just wanted to say thank you to all the commissioners. I know sometimes we get this huge pizza, and we're trying to bite in to figure out how do we get to the end part, and I think, you know, um, I know it takes a lot of time and effort, and a lot of this stuff, I think a lot of us are like, what are we talking about? So I appreciate your times and efforts and reading and asking questions. Um, um, so, thank you. Are there any other Planning Commissioner comments? Greg, I see you unmuted. Jump in.
Yeah, um, I just, I just wanted to reiterate, uh, that, um, I think our best, I think our best approach is, is if we have an issue with, um, with, uh, licenses in June, I think we should deal with that issue rather than try to address a bigger picture. And, and do the minimum that we feel we can, we can safely do as, as just a, that we won't even finish the, um, you know, that we'll just do the, the bare minimum, that we, that would fit with any number of different ways that we may decide to go, uh, uh, the larger picture. And I, I guess I'd just like to also suggest that, uh, maybe we just go with, uh, you know, uh, we've, we've talked about Coustebe, I posted Coustebe last time. Coustebe is a, is a, they just did their, um, um, their ordinances and passed one with a lot of great comment, their, their, um, city council meeting is online, you can see it. Uh, great questions, talking about how they did it. They put a cap in, the cap they put in was larger than the number of STRs they had. That's just the way it was with them, but they have a process for attrition, so that the numbers can come down to a number if they ever want to have it. But we may just want to look at, at, at Coustebe.
Um, Greg, I wanted to ask you to mention something that, that you and I talked about, and that was the percentage of vacation rentals, kind of per capita, and what the typical um, percentage was to determine those caps. Um, do, do you recall that conversation?
Yeah, uh, it varies, it varies in the different towns. Uh, Coustebe picked one percent. Uh, Banda, uh, uh, Brookings talked about a cap, and they said, oh, we're not going to worry about it until it's ten percent. So it's all over the board. But the mechanisms for, for how to, how to cap, and how to, the attrition, if they want to do attrition, or if they want to do a cap, those methods are, are well-known.
Okay, and, and am I correct?
It just matters what we want to do.
Am I correct?
I don't, there's no standard.
Um, did, did you say that Port Orford is currently at seven percent?
That sounds about right.
I believe it's six point eight or seven percent.
Okay, I think that's what Jessica said.
Just for perspective, yeah.
Yep.
Any other Planning Commissioner comments? Okay, uh, now we're on to Agenda Item Eight, Public Considerations. Do we have any, um, comments from the public about anything, just in general? What, Sarah, I saw you pop up real quick.
Oh, well, I can wait. Um, I just in, uh, just wanted to, um, reiterate that I'm very happy to hear that you're going to include the question of whether people want the STR in their neighborhood. I mean, that really shows that you're trying to include the community's, um, perspective on this situation, so I really appreciate that. And I just wanted to remind, to remind you what I found, that there's twenty-six, uh, TLTs that are, um, vacation rentals coming up in June, if I did that right. And so, all the others, and there's a huge stack of them, and Jessica knows, um, have, are not current. You know, they, they applied, and I don't know if they're still in existence, but there's quite a few. Um, and I also want to say, um, thank you Commissioner Reinhold for reiterating the issue of affordability in our, um, community, and the impact that STRs may have, has on that particular situation. And also, remember, we still get TLT money from hotels, B&amp;Bs, motels, and we haven't really defined homestays, um, homestays. I just, um, thank you all for letting me speak today, and, and all the hard work and effort you're putting into this. Thank you.
Hugh, uh, Mr. Vernon, I saw you next.
All right, yeah, I would just like to comment on, um, uh, anyway, this, yeah, I'm a new year community, been here a couple years, came from Bend. Um, they went through all these same struggles with affordability, and, um, it's, it's a really difficult situation, uh, I don't want to make light of it. Um, and, uh, I think every community has to find its own way there, but what, what I'm here to speak about, um, is, uh, the lady, uh, from the state there, DCLD, is, is a, it's a, Oregon has a huge affordable housing problem, and, um, uh, I just, um, I came over here, I built several units in Bend, um, that were considered affordable housing, under a thousand square feet, some of them is almost four hundred square feet. And, uh, your code, um, has been talked about as being antiquated. And I think there's two answers to every problem, you know? You're, you're concerned about, um, these short-term rentals, uh, taking away from affordable housing, and, and I'll just suggest there's very little affordable housing. I just produced two, one, just a thousand fifty-square-foot homes here with the hope of, um, selling them as affordable houses. But, in, in a day where you have to pay a hundred dollars a sheet for a piece of plywood, and two hundred dollars an hour to a plumber, um, it just wasn't possible. Um, I sold one for three hundred ninety-five thousand, and in my world, that's not affordable. Um, I don't know about the rest of you people, but, you know, I'm in the business. Um, I look around at what the home sales are here. Um, you know, for a fairly marginal home, it's three hundred and fifty thousand, and I'm guessing that the homes that most of these people are renting as short-term rentals, I know there's one right across the street I'm looking at, it's listed for eight hundred thousand dollars. That, that home is not affordable for anybody to rent or any service person to buy. So I was challenged by Rotary's, uh, one of their members, Dave Bassett. And he said, you know, you've done, you've done this, you built them in Bend, you came here. So I purchased some commercially-zoned property, read through the code, there's no minimum lot size, so, um, I went with an engineer and a designer, and came up with an eight-lot subdivision, uh, with small homes ranging, um, you know, give or take six hundred feet, with the hope to produce affordable housing, and, um, uh, I did not realize, um, I, I couldn't find in your code anywhere where it said, um, they could not build a stick-built home under a thousand square feet. There is a provision for, um, uh, manufactured homes to be no less than that. But my assumption, which was wrong, that you could build a small home here in Port Orford, and, um, to Bailey's comment, you know, something for people that are not, uh, uh, you know, of privilege, you know, doctors, lawyers, out-of-town equity refugees, I mean, we all see who's coming. Anyway, my application, uh, would not even be considered. So, your code needs, in my opinion, I mean, if you want a financially gated community, stick with your code. Because if I want to build a four thousand-square-foot house for a tech mogul, I would sail right through, but if I, in, in my efforts to produce a small home on a small lot in a commercial zone, the application would not even be considered. So, that's the town you live in, and you're on the Planning Commission, so I challenge you to say, you know, what do you want? Do you want places that no one can live, except for exclusive people? And, um, if you don't, then I would say that, you know, And if you don't, then I would say that, you know, you need to look at your code, you need to think about this. I testified in front of the city council about your need for auxiliary dwellings, and how this has been found to be one of the most effective tools to add affordable housing. It's, I think, the, the lady from DCLL, or whoever it is, will, will confirm to me that that's been found to be a very effective way for, to add housing to your city. Nothing's been done with that, and so.
Mr. Vernon, I'm going to stop you real quick. We usually keep it three minutes. I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Okay, so that's, that's pretty much it. If you want affordable housing, I think you need to look at your code, because it doesn't allow for it.
Thank you. Are there any other public considerations? Anne, go ahead.
Thank you so much, all of you, and thank you, Krista, for the opportunity to have a conclusory comment. There's always so much that's learned in these meetings, and thanks for your comments, Mr. Vernon, that was very interesting. I just want to close, back going back to the STRs, and just mention a few things that I heard that I think were really important today. I really appreciated Crystal's and Greg's approach of saying, we need to figure out what we want to do here, and then move forward. It feels like, and then I appreciated hearing Krista saying, I don't know how we do that. How do we decide what we want to do and then move forward? So I can see that it's super frustrating. I thought it was interesting Commissioner Thielen's concept of saying, well, what about looking at Coos Bay? What about picking a city where we think they've done it good, done it well, excuse me, and then adjusting to make it work for us? I mean, that might be a way forward. It seems like you're struggling to get a path forward, but so many other places have been through this struggle, so it doesn't seem like we should have to totally reinvent the wheel from the bottom up. And I would encourage Crystal or Wei to perhaps help us, help you guys to have a path forward, because this is really confusing and difficult. I mean, it just seems like, you know, you could just make the decision, okay, what's our strategy? Are we going to cap it? Okay, how are we going to do it? You know? It just seems like it's hard to find the path, especially through a meeting like this. But anyway, it shouldn't be, it seems really hard, but I hope we can find a way, and just thank you all so much.
Thank you, Anne. Is there any other public comments or public consideration? Okay, so commissioners for the next meeting, we'll look at definitions, please send Chris, or please send Jessica your top seven checklist points. And then we'll look at the survey, and hopefully we can get it out and get some data for that. So it is now five twenty-three. I would like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, this meeting for the Planning Commission is adjourned. Our next meeting will be April fifth at three thirty. Thank you all very much.